Hi, Mark.
Hi, David. How are you?
Good. We're good, John.
Okay. Township and Monroe Planning Board, April 22, 2021, open for business at 6:30. Call to order. Everybody rise and salute the flag. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, it is hereby announced and trumped into the minutes of this meeting that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following: Posted on the bulletin board of the office of the township clerk, posted on the bulletin boards within this complex, printed in the Home News Tribune on January 1, 2021, posted on the Monroe Township website, and sent to those individuals who have requested personal notice. We're having a roll call, please.
Mayor's representative, Mr. Van Zora.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Vice Chairman Riggs.
Here.
Mr. Rothman.
Here.
Mr. Polori. Andy not here. Ms. Polidoro.
Here.
Ms. Brodsky.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Gaffrey.
Here.
Mr. Markell.
Here.
Mr. Sedar.
Here.
Has everybody had a chance to read the meetings of the regular meeting of March 25? If so, do you have any input?
I would move to approve the minutes as written.
I second it.
Laura.
Would you like a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Van Zora.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Rothman.
Yes.
The abstain. I wasn't at that one.
Yes. Ms. Polidoro.
Yes.
Ms. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffrey.
Yes.
Abstain.
All right.
Mr. Markell.
Yes.
Okay.
I would see we have a new person with us this evening, Mark Gaffrey. Mark, if you'd take a couple of minutes to introduce yourself.
Thank you, John. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I am a 20-year resident of Monroe. Both of my kids went K through 12 in Monroe, Monroe Public School System. I'm a practicing attorney with the Holland Longo Firm in New Brunswick. I've been with that firm 33 years. I'm also incoming vice president for the Middlesex County Bar Association, and I'm also an adjunct professor at Rutgers. I teach undergraduate constitutional law.
All right. Thank you very much.
John, I would say he's overqualified.
Tonight's agenda starts out with the election of a planning board chairperson. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a motion at this time, I would make a motion to appoint Mark Gaffrey as chairman of the planning board. I've known Mark for many of those 30 years that he's been an attorney as we are pass, of course, many times in Middlesex County. I think he is eminently qualified for the position. He's well-spoken, he's knowledgeable, and he's also got what I would consider a proper temperament for being the planning board, which at times can be a challenge. And I think Mark would do a wonderful job in that role as chairman, and I would wholeheartedly endorse him, and I would ask the council to consider his appointment as chairman.
I thank you for that nomination. I would second it.
Seconded. Terry Newton of the council planning board, right?
What's that, Dave?
I said you meant, you didn't mean council, you meant planning board.
Did I say council?
Yes.
It only takes a couple of months and chairman of the planning board. At the risk of having two attorneys on here at one time.
The nominations and go to a vote.
Before we go, can you move Andy Polori over?
I'm here, Laura. Thank you.
Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Hi, Andy.
Hi, Rosalyn. Hi, everybody.
Okay.
I like your background.
We're voting now nominated Mark Gaffrey.
Yeah, yeah, I was on. Actually, I did not get moved, so I heard the whole thing, yeah. Welcome aboard.
Okay. Mr. Van Zora?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Mr. Polori?
Yes.
Ms. Polidoro?
Yes.
Ms. Brodsky?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffrey?
Abstain.
Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Mr. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And then moving on the agenda this evening, the next item would be applications, and I understand that there are no applications tonight. So we will move on to memorialize resolutions from the past meeting. The first resolution is PB-1227-20, the Abiel Road JCG Associates LLC. Is there any discussion to be had with respect to that resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I would add that the resolution has been reviewed by the professional staff of Monroe Township, also has been reviewed by the applicant's attorney, and the version that you have before you this evening is adequately meets the standards for memorialization, and I'd ask that it be approved.
I make a motion to approve it.
I second the motion.
Okay, the second resolution is PB-123.
You need a, we need a least affirmative vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Terry, you want to do all in favor, or should we do a roll call?
I think there's no controversy. You could do all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, it appears as though it's approved.
Yes.
Okay, the second resolution is PB-1231-20, Amazon.com Services LLC. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, again, this was reviewed by our professional staff, reviewed by the attorney for the applicant. It appears to reflect the decision of the board, and I'd ask the board to approve this memorialization.
I will move it.
I'll second.
Laura, you want to take a vote?
I do all in favor.
Okay, we can do all in favor. Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention. Well, the motion passes.
Okay.
From what I understand, the, we're going to take the agenda somewhat out of order, and we're going to do the presentation to the board by the Monroe Master Plan, and we will open it up to the public following the presentation.
Fine.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Cochrane. I'm a senior project planner with H2M, and I'm here to present, and I know that Mr. Stroien wanted to do a quick introduction, but I am going to share my screen.
Ryan, can I give, can I do a quick introduction first?
Absolutely.
That would be, that would be great. I really appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight marks the beginning of the township's effort to do a comprehensive review of its master plan. This will be a transformational process that will shape how the township will look over the next 10 years and beyond. The administration recognizes that issues related to court-ordered affordable housing, traffic and circulation, open space and recreation, and utility infrastructure are critical challenges currently impacting every resident and business in Monroe. Accordingly, the mayor has asked for a fresh look at our plan and stressed that transparency is paramount to every aspect of the review. And so for the first time in Monroe's history, the public will be involved in every aspect of this master plan review. An extensive public outreach program is being developed that will give every resident and constituent of the township numerous opportunities to not only hear about the plan and monitor its progress, but also, and most importantly, to have a voice in how the plan is shaped. This is an extremely important undertaking for the township and one that everyone that I have had the opportunity to speak with is enthusiastically looking forward to beginning. And I stress, this is only the beginning. And so on behalf of the mayor, council, planning board, and all resident stakeholders, I would like to formally introduce the team of professionals that have been hired by the township to both perform this comprehensive review and guide us through to completion. Ryan, I'll turn it over to you and the team to outline the process and the various phases that will take place during the upcoming months.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. And my name is Ryan Cochrane. I'm a senior project planner with H2M, and I just want to congratulate Chairman Gaffrey on your nomination and appointment, and really look forward to working with you. I also wanted to say how much I appreciate your folks' time, and I understand what a commitment this is to perform an essential business service for the municipality. It's oftentimes overlooked by a lot of the residents, but I don't take it lightly. I know that you guys, you know, are committed, and being on the planning board is something that takes a special person, so I appreciate your guys' time, and I really look forward to working with you. So if I may, I'm going to share my screen. And one second right here. And please let me know if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you. Jerome Convery.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
We can hear you.
Yeah. So again, I'm Ryan Cochrane. I'm the project manager for this amazing project that we're really, really excited to be part of. You know, it's very far and few between, from a municipal standpoint, municipal planning standpoint, that you actually have an opportunity to undergo a full, comprehensive master plan update. As such, we've assembled a, an amazing team that is custom-tailored to address some of the identified issues by the township. And, you know, just a little bit about me, and I'll go through the team. Again, I'm going to be project manager, but we have an awesome team, Leon Avakian Associates, Jennifer Beam, who's a renowned planner in the state, will be the technical planning lead assisting on this project. We have Stephen Wong from Sam Schwartz. Sam Schwartz is a leading transportation planning and engineering firm that works nationally as well as locally, and Stephen Wong is also a local. He lives in Hightstown, not too far away. We have Deana Gunn, who's with Direct Development. She's going to be working with us on the design of this process as well as the outreach and communication. We have Mr. Kencilla from my group, who is going to be the publicinput.com lead, and I'll get into what publicinput.com is later. That's kind of the repository and public outreach forum, public engagement forum that we're going to be using web-based. We have Mr. Patrick Cole, who has been working with the township on the utility end for a number of years and provides technical advisement with regard to utilities. We have Mr. Alan Hillah. He's a technical advisor, professional planner, as well as licensed engineer. And then Ms. Sanchevan, who is our planning lead and planning advisor. And so, you know, we really have a robust team of professionals that have worked throughout the state as well as nationally in the planning capacity with experience and, you know, that, you know, various levels of experience, but expertise in public outreach, comprehensive master plan updates, circulation for housing, open space rec, environmental, but also also utilities as well. So again, we, we, we're really, really excited to be part of this, this, this forward-thinking opportunity here for the municipality, and I really look forward to working with you folks throughout this process. So what is a master plan? So a master plan is, I'm not using the technical municipal land use law definition, but in general, it's a guiding document for, for multidisciplinary planning, investment throughout the community, and it's going to be a guide for, for the community for at least the next 10 years. It's regulated by 455D-28, and the required elements of any master plan or a land use plan, housing element, and there is a number of optional components. Given some of the dynamic issues happening within the municipality, the township opted to move forward with a number of optional elements, including the circulation element, with the intent of addressing and planning for traffic as well as multimodal improvements throughout the municipality, parks and open space and trails. That is, that's key, a part of this, this, this planning process as we're looking to balance future growth with open space preservation as well as enhancement in order to make sure that Monroe has and maintains and enhances their amazing sense of place and community that currently exists. Infrastructures and utilities is something else that we're going to be honing in on, looking, looking at, you know, the utility boundaries as well as, you know, where, where potentially extensions or surface areas and where there's deficits, also infrastructure connections and infrastructure improvements from a public infrastructure standpoint, recycling plan. And then, and again, this is kind of based off of the latest master plan reexamination that you folks underwent last year and ties into what was ultimately recommended as part of that process. Additionally, we're going to be including a robust strategic implementation schedule at the end of each one of these elements geared towards really making this a working document, not something that just sits on a shelf. We like to put together plans, and we've had a lot of success putting together plans that, that really outline strategies, funding mechanisms, prioritization of recommendations, who is going to be an implementing entity, and really outline how to get what's talked about in the plan actually accomplished. So, so again, that's kind of like the high-level overview of what the master plan is and what we sort of envision. Now, on top of that, we've, we've really identified some overarching goals that we feel will lead towards a highly successful plan, something that, something that I think we can build consensus with as well as really get folks excited about the, about the future. So we've coined it EPE, but in general, it's, we're really focusing on engagement. That's the first part of this entire process. We, we want to make it as inclusive as possible and provide as many opportunities as possible within the timeframe of the overall project for folks to engage. We are going to be having a, a robust survey to really hone in on some of the issues, concerns, desires, opportunities throughout the community. Additionally, we're going to be focusing on preservation, so we want to make sure that we preserve the existing character of the community as well as the assets within the community. As you know, Monroe Township is an amazing place to live. I think it was recently voted number nine safest place in the state. I think I saw an article the other day. So those types of assets and those types of things that make Monroe great, we want to make sure that those are preserved and identified and preserved throughout the process. So enhancement, we really, anytime you're doing a master planning process, the goal, one of the goals is to how to enhance the community. And, you know, understanding the, the court-mandated affordable housing obligation that Monroe had successfully negotiated, we want to, again, have a really incredible open space element that really helps to balance and prioritize open space funding as well as investment and acquisition and enhancement. That leads to, you know, maintaining your, maintaining your existing sense of place and quality of living, but also providing the opportunity for enhancement. And then evolve. So we want to put strategies and recommendations and, and, you know, funding, identify funding sources for future implementation of things that are discussed and identified throughout this process. And again, that's, that's kind of where we're talking about the strategic implementation matrix that we're going to be including as part of each element of this master plan. So the engagement is, again, the most important part of this overall process. And we're going to be using both web-based through publicinput.com, who we've partnered with successfully on a number of projects recently, given the restrictions associated with COVID. However, we're also going to, you know, once, once we've identified the potential for in-person meetings or workshops, we are going to also potentially be looking at opportunities for in-person workshops as well. So, so again, I talked about a survey. The survey is important because it really, it really provides an opportunity for folks to, to, to give their input, and then we're going to take that input and put it into, you know, put it, put it into statistics, but also identify trends, themes that we see with the responses, and make sure that it's weaved inexorably throughout the plan. We've also, you know, again, I touched on that before, but funding mechanisms, we want this to be a document that really works, works for municipality and works more than all. So, again, public outreach, public engagement, part of that, and guidance. Part of that is to have strategic committees and stakeholder groups. So the township has put together a master plan subcommittee. The stakeholders group, planning board, you are the adopting entity, and will be, you know, a key component of this. We're going to be meeting with the open space committee, the environmental commission, and then, again, community input, that's the most, that's the key, making sure that everyone has the opportunity and the ability to put, to input and have, have, have their say as part of this overall process. So the first, the first core group, the one that's really driving the whole process, is a master plan subcommittee. So master subcommittee includes three planning board members, two zoning board members, as well as the township professionals, Mr. Convery, Mr. Razimowicz, Mr. Russo, Mr. Stroien, Mr. Weinberg. So, you know, the goal of, and we're going to be meeting bi-weekly with the master plan subcommittee throughout the process, but we're going to be certain, so the goal was, and the reason that they set up the subcommittee in this way is to serve as the liaison between township, township council, planning board, zoning board, environmental commission. And then the best by subcommittee will also be working towards identifying schedule and prioritizing schedule, working to help public, you know, making sure that the public engagement is appropriate and is reaching the appropriate groups. They're going to help facilitate with the community workshop meetings, and then drafting a document, providing key input on a bi-weekly basis. We're going to be providing status updates, working through the document, the details of the document throughout the entire process with the subcommittee. And then, you know, as board professionals and township professionals and key, key members of the planning board and zoning board, there, this group is a, is an amazing technical resource for us and for the folks on the, on the professional team. And then we have, we have a great stakeholder group that has been put together by the township. And this, this stakeholder group is kind of a broader swath of folks that come from different backgrounds, but also have different focuses within the community to make sure that we're getting a full picture. And the stakeholder group, we're going to be meeting with a number of times in order to solicit some more broad-based folk, but yet focused feedback. And I believe we're scheduled to meet with them next week on the 29th, and we're really excited about that, to kick off the process with them as well. And again, there, it's a broad swath of community leaders, folks that are involved in different groups throughout the community, and it allows us to have one-on-one contact with these folks throughout the process and make sure that we're integrating and addressing issues associated with their focus. So scope, so what are we talking about here? We've got five phases that we proposed for the process. And in fact, you know, we're, we're, we're basically, and you can see my laser pointer here. We, project administration phase kind of goes concurrently throughout the entire process, but we've already started substantially on phase two. So we've, we've started to compile the existing materials. That's the existing conditions analysis. The literature review, so we've, we've been, we've been working with Joe Stroien as well as the township professionals on putting together the full information background, and then we've started to take a look at the demographics. And then we've also started to work with the township's PIO as well as the township professionals on really honing in on the public engagement strategy, working on the website, the public survey, and then, and then making sure that all the virtual public meetings are set up, coordinated, scheduled, and are in place and ready to go so we can adhere to the schedule and make sure that this is, you know, as expeditious as possible. Phase four is, is subsequent to the community engagement. So once we've engaged with the community, we've done a number of public workshops, met with the stakeholders, met with key community leaders as well as you folks. We will then start to develop the draft plan and work on the plan. And then ultimately, the plan will be adopted by you as the board or considered for adoption by you, you as the planning board. And, and I'll get into detail with the work plan in a later slide, but that's in general the phasing of the project. So what is the role of the plan? So the planning board, beyond having members that are involved on a bi-weekly basis on the master plan subcommittee, you folks, we, we would like to invite you folks to, to meet with me, with my, my, my professional group to have a one-on-one discussion and talk about some of the issues that you've experienced, issues, opportunities, and, and, and things that you'd like to see in this process. So we're going to work with Mr. McGowan to help schedule those meetings, and we're going to make ourselves available to each and every one of you as planning board members on a one-on-one or in a group basis, whatever you prefer. But, but that, that's, that's one of the key components and roles. And we, we understand that you folks have been part of the community for a long time or invested and have an understanding of this planning process and see these applications and know folks throughout the community. So we feel, we, we're really excited to be meeting and trying to schedule a meeting with you folks to discuss some of those things. On top of that, we're going to be providing a memo, a monthly memo of a, of a kind of high-level, deep, high-level update of the status of where we're at, what we've accomplished. Both at the stakeholders group subcommittee as well as our administratively. So th- this way you guys have a clear understanding of where we're at in the process, you know, through May and June prior to, and July, prior to the adoption of the, of the plan. And then, and then again, you're going to be holding the public adoption hearing, hearing subsequent to the, to the multitude of meetings that we're going to be having, open, public meetings that we're going to be having throughout the process. So this is the, I call it a work plan, but it's a graphical representation of the schedule, some key milestones. And, and, and if I can get my laser pointer here. So we've done an internal kickoff. We started to work through the public input website development. We've identified obviously the key stakeholders through the development of the stakeholder group. We've done, I've done two site, well, two, I would say town tours as well as site visits. And then we're right here. We're here at the initial planning board meeting here at the end of April. Next week, we will be meeting with the stakeholder group. We started the department head interview, interviews and professional interviews. Actually, today we had an excellent meeting with Mr. Razimoitz. By the way, who has probably one of the most amazing understanding as well as background and, and knowledge of the community. So I'm really excited to be working with him through, throughout this process. I was, you know, I was amazed that, that Mark had basically an answer to everyone, one of our questions, which is, which is great. We're working on finalizing the public, public input website, which will be cross-linked to the township's website. Then the first stakeholder, the second stakeholder meeting is going to be scheduled for at some point in May. And will coincide with some of the, the launch of the public input survey, which will be, we anticipated going through May and a little bit into June. We'd like to kind of have a, a defined timeline for opening and closing. This way we can digest the information and put it into a formulate plan. We're going to be doing, again, those community workshop meetings. One's going to be in the mid, in the middle of May. Another community workshop meeting will be early June. And then we're going to do a joint stakeholder slash community workshop meeting in July at some point to, to review the final portion of plan. The first two community workshops are going to be focused more on receiving information. Well, at least the first one, the second one, we're going to be talking through some of the draft higher level recommendations for consensus building with a real focus on consensus building. And then that joint community workshop meeting will be sort of a more defined draft plan overview. And then we're going to finalize the pan through, through July and August with the, with the hope of, of ultimately adopting this in August. Now, this is the desired schedule. You know, but, but, but we've set up this project to be flexible, but this is the desired work plan moving forward. So again, public outreach is, is paramount to this whole entire process. So public input is a public engagement website that we've implemented with a number of other communities that we've worked through on these processes and had a lot of success. Again, when, you know, understanding the times that we're in here and not every, not everyone's has the ability to meet in person. I mean, my preference, I mean, I've been doing this for 17 years, but I really like to meet with folks in person. But I think that this provides kind of an amazing alternative, but it also provides a, a way to have a repository for all the information about the project. And I, I think that's key. This, you know, we, we want to be open and transparent throughout this process. And it provides the opportunity to, to host surveys, but also, yeah, the meetings will be posted on this website. You'll have general comment sections that will show the process. It will give status updates. We'll have documents and, and, and mapping and, and everything that's being developed throughout the process will be hosted on this website. So it's an amazing tool and we've had a lot of success with it. Most recently in Westfield, working through it in, in, in the borough of Leonia right now as well. And the survey, while it may seem a little, a little daunting at first, but it's, 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 it's a key component to this overall process. And again, we're fine tuning that process and the survey right now with the, with the public outreach group. And, and our hope is that, that that is launched at some point in early May. And we're going to be doing, working with the PIO as well as our, our direct development group to identify areas, both on the web, but in hard copy to make sure that we promote this and market this appropriately throughout the community. So, so we're really excited about that and being, being able to utilize this for public input. So community workshops, you know, at least one of them, probably two of them will be hosted through Zoom. We're going to be doing breakout groups, breakout rooms on specific topics with key professionals from our, from our overall group to help facilitate as well as some of the folks that are part of the master plan subcommittee to help facilitate, to solicit, you know, focused public feedback on specific focuses within, 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 within the community and within this process. Although we have, again, talked about how we may have an opportunity, given that the restrictions seem to be, from COVID standpoint, seem to be lessening. We, we may do a hybrid or an in-person workshop. You know, potentially to, to, to have kind of one-on-one interaction and, 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 and face-to-face interaction and public engagement. So additional outreach, we're going to be, again, doing key department head interviews. We're going to be reaching out to homeowners associations and neighborhood group contacts to facilitate discussions. We're going to be working with the township's professionals throughout the process. And we're going to be coordinating meetings with specific committees, includes, including the open space committee as well as the environmental commission to discuss focused topics that we're looking to address within the master plan. So some of the most immediate next steps, and I've kind of mentioned them throughout are confirming all the meeting dates, both, both the community workshop, but as well as the stakeholder groups. We're going to be launching the public input website. We're going to be doing significant public outreach and notice for the availability of the survey. And then the department head interviews. So those are kind of the most immediate next steps. And with that, I'd like to thank you and I really appreciate it. I hope you guys know what tree I'm showing here. But I, I, I was driving down Apple Garth Road and I, I didn't take this picture because when I was driving down the road, the leaf, the leaves were off, but I noticed this right away and I thought it was, you know, apropos to include it as part of closing here because, because I think it's, you know, one of those wonderful community assets that, that we're looking to preserve and highlight throughout this process. So with that, I appreciate your time and I really look forward to working with you and I really look forward to scheduling the one-on-one or group sessions with you folks on the planning board. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you for a wonderful presentation. Is there any questions or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, I have one. Yes. By the way, I thought it was next one presentation as well. I should point out something about Monroe, which is not unique to Monroe, but is, is very much part of Monroe. We have within Monroe over a dozen senior communities, adult communities. What we discovered during this pandemic in trying to secure vaccines was that a number, a fairly sizable number of people were not particularly good with using computers or internet in order to secure it. So my comment back is because we are a little more on the older side than maybe some other towns are, that you look to using some other ways of getting, creating that kind of community effort. Most of these communities have their own newsletter or newspaper. You may want to add to that. All I'm saying to you is that to truly get a picture of Monroe, you may have to go an extra step than just the website alone. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman. And, and I failed to mention that we will be having hard copy surveys distributed at key community points. And we will, we be, be working with the township to have those entered digitally by township personnel. But we will provide, we will do, be doing significant outreach to these, these, these communities.
Thank you, Dave.
Hard copy, hard copy as well as through their.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other questions?
I have to ask. I notice on your committees, you have no representatives of any of the adult communities. Not one that I saw.
Not one.
That's right. And we're about 50% of the community.
There's 12 adult communities.
Yes.
So I think you should reconsider and put somebody representing the adult communities on your committee, at least one or two.
Well, Michael, aren't you under Michael? Michael, Marco?
Yes, I'm in Rosmore.
He's from an adult community.
If I can interject, Mr. Chairman, believe me, the entire team has considered the, the reach of the adult communities. And I think you noticed in the presentation that the actual team will be meeting with all of the individual homeowners associations. Because if you put one homeowner association on a team, the others will feel slighted. So what we want to try to do is include all of the homeowner association members and those teams, and we will be working individually with each adult community.
All right, good.
All right.
Mr. Plauri?
Very good.
To Chairman, thank you very much. I hope everybody can hear me. Mr. Conklin, thank you very much to you and your team for an excellent presentation. I appreciate it. I want to make it very clear on behalf of every resident in Monroe that this is historical. This is very personal. This is our community. We want to make sure that the community's character is preserved. And what I mean by that is we just heard from my colleague, Mr. Rothman, and from Roslyn, that we have 50% senior community. They need to be represented. They need to, their interest must be taken into consideration. Very similarly, we have a growing ethnic population, especially from South Asia. And they need to be represented on these communities, on these committees as well. Being an engineer, I have, I get around with planners quite a bit, so I know about master plan a thing or two. So I am going to ask you a couple of questions regarding that. I think I, one of the points that I wrote was, you know, publishing a website is not good enough for some of the communities. You actually have to go into their clubhouses and have provided that they're all vaccinated. You need to do something in person with them. And I also, I want to make sure that, you know, maybe Mr. Stroin, that you already have it. I did not see it, but you know, you may have some South Asian community as a part of the, the, the stakeholder group as well. One of the questions I was going to ask Mr. Conklin is that, are you conducting visioning exercises as a part of this? Like I said, I'm, I'm, I know enough to be dangerous. So that's number one. And I'm, by trade, I'm a transportation engineer for 30 some years. So circulation element within Monroe is very near and dear to my heart. Safety of the people, mobility of the people. We have senior communities. We have, you know, people who are not born and brought up here, driving cars. And although on the planning board, we look at individual parcels of land development, their impacts. We have not seen anything cumulative of all of those impacts across the township. So I'm extremely excited that you guys are taking this up. And I see Sam Schwartz on the team. So I know I have a highest regard for Sam Schwartz himself. I know him personally. So that's a great thing that they do good work. But I really want you to take into consideration some of the things that are happening. And it should not be just restricted to mo- to, to mobility from automobiles only. Obviously you need to look at bicycling, at pedestrian, all modes of transportation combined to get together. And, and, and any help that I can render. I'm a resident for 15 years. I'm on the board of education. I'll be more than happy to give you any time you need to sit down with you guys and share some of the visioning. I know you probably not going to tell me that visioning is not a part of this, but if it is, I'm definitely interested in being a part of it to create.
It is.
It is awesome. Excellent. Very much.
Part of, one of the key components to our first community workshop meeting will be a visioning component.
Okay. So you, you're going to put some workshops as a part of the visioning process. Like you get an onion paper, put them on a, on a table and people draw and say, this is how it needs to be. We're sort of unique compared to, you know, where you said Westfield, you know, Route 28 is their downtown. We don't have a downtown. And we don't want to have a downtown. At least I don't want to have a downtown, but I, it should not be about one person. It's about the entire community. And for you to get that information is extremely important. Okay? I work for a company called WSP Parsons Brinkerhoff. So you might've heard of a thing or two about them. So I bring that knowledge, use it for whatever it's worth for you to, to bring this. And like I said, this is extremely personal to me and my, my neighbors and, and my community for folks across the town. So please let us know how we can be a part of it, how we can help it and how we can preserve the character of this community, which is going from suburban to almost an urban situation right now with the affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Yeah, Mr. Sandor.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks again, Mr. Conklin, for your presentation. I'm a little bit dangerous as Andy is. I'm a Six Sigma Master Black Belt. So I have some experience in this as well. So I, I, I just want to have, I have two questions. So in terms of the voice of the customer, how many, how many folks do you plan to get a sample size of, where you would think it would be an adequate number? And then my second question to you is in terms of the outcome of this, of, of your, of your work, there are things that are going to be characteristics that are going to be mandatory, which I think everyone on this, on this panel would expect. And then there's going to be that level of delighters, things that we would not expect for you to come up with. So my question in, in that respect is based on your, your experience doing this with other townships, what's that percentage?
Sure. So to answer your first question, thank you, Mr. Sandor. We, we typically will, let me back up. So traditionally planning, you'd look for a two to four percent return rate on some of these surveys. However, our public input website gives us the ability to direct kind of market it through Facebook. So basically it, it, we can select the locations and the demographics and the people within the community through that program to have a focused public outreach. So the lots of folks on Facebook and in their social media platforms will actually get it directly marketed to them. And we've had a lot higher success rates. So for example, in Westfield, it was closer towards 10%. And I think it might've eclipsed 10%. So that's, that's a good response rate for any survey. And, you know, we're hopeful that we'll get to that level. But, but, but typically on these surveys, it's a two to four percent response rate, although I'm hoping it will be higher. And in terms of the, the, the next question, you know, I think that, you know, I, I've worked nationally as well as, you know, Mr. Wong and, and, and we're going to bring a lot of different perspectives from, from other, other, other projects that we've worked on ju- outside of New Jersey. So I think, you know, while primarily my focus has been New Jersey, I think that, that allows us as a group to kind of think about other things that, that aren't typically done necessarily in New Jersey, but work, but may work for New Jersey. So I think you'll be delighted to see some things that, that you may not have seen in, in sort of these, these. in sort of these, these more traditional master plans. On top of that, how we're master plan is, is really going to have a focus on providing a visual, I, I call it a visual way of conveying statistics as well as, as recommendations. So we, we're going to weave in infographic type, you know, type, type focuses throughout the document to really parlay that with, 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 and take it above a traditional, fully written document. And, and, and again, our strategies and strategic implementation strat, matrix that we include as part of the, the, the end portion of the element is really focused on implementation. Again, traditional master plans in the state of Jersey have recommendations, but then they don't take it that extra step to identify funding sources, identifying the implementing entities, how to get these things effectuated, timelines, those types of things. So we're going to take it to that next level where we really make this a useful and, and document that, 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 that's weaved throughout your, you know, throughout your pub, your, 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 your planning, planning document. So again, I think that you'll, you'll be pleasantly surprised with, with the outcome.
Cool. Thank you.
I remember if I could, as, as the chairperson of the master plan, the subcommittee and the stakeholders, I've now had the opportunity to listen to Brian a couple of times explain what they're all about and everything. And like others, I'm also impressed with, with their presentation. But what I, what I want to emphasize also is interesting. Dave had a mention of a lot of our seniors that don't have computer skills and things that was brought up before and they're going to make the effort to make sure that this, all the seniors get some form of input, whether it be paper, whether it be letters, newsletters, whatever it may be. We want them involved. We want our South Asian community involved. We want all of the people in our town to have some, some say in what's going on with the future of this town. And this is going to be, this is the future of Monroe. We have certain things that we have to live with. We do have to live with affordable housing. That's not going to change, but we're going to try and do those type of things in our best interest. What are we going to do in terms of recreation? Do, you know, we all want open space. We all don't want overdevelopment and things of that nature, but to the extent that maybe there might be a warehouse that goes somewhere. Well, warehouses are good because they keep taxes down, but nobody's going to want a warehouse in their backyard because then trucks are going to be coming by. So these are all the types of things that we have to weigh. And probably the only, the one most important thing that I just want to say right now is all of us as members of the planning board, as well as all of these other committees Ryan are going to meet with, it's up to us to get all the people involved. So Andy, you know, a lot of people, make sure that they fill out the survey. You know, everybody should be filling it out, not just the seniors, not just this particular community or that community. We need the whole town to fill it out and try and get as much as we can. I mean, I realize it's a little bit pie in the sky. It's not going to be everybody. And as, you know, Ryan said, 10% would be a great response. We all know even voting, you know, a lot of people don't vote, but, but this is our future and how do we want it? And if people want to come forward and, and have a say so and how the town moves forward, now's the chance to do it. This is a tremendous opportunity. So it's up to all of us to go back. When you go back in your neighborhood and you see your friends walking around, hey folks, by the way, you know, we're going to be redoing the master plan here, you know, you're going to be getting a chance to do a survey. Take the time out and fill it out. Let us know. I mean, Ryan and his company sound like they're very good, but they're not, you know, they're not Kornak. They're not going to, you know, just be able to understand what's in people's heads unless you tell them what's in people's heads. So it's up to us to get the word out, by the meetings with the committees, meetings with the seniors, meetings with the different communities, but all of us, all of us from town. And, and, and that goes for the people, you know, that are not in senior communities, people who've lived in the town for years and years and, and some of the older developments. We want them involved because those are a lot of the people that, you know, say, hey, I've been here all these years and I don't necessarily like the direction of town. Like, tell us, tell us what you think. We want everybody involved. We want everybody to, you know, participate in this. And, and that's how we'll, we'll be able to, again, going back to what the mayor has said since he's been in, we want our town to be inclusive. We want to hear from everyone, from both sides of the aisle, whoever has anything to say, let's listen to everybody. Let's get the best of the suggestions. Ryan and his team will be able to kind of put it together. We'll analyze it, we'll talk about it. And hopefully i- if we do it that way, we'll be able to put together a plan that, that really is in the best interest of Monroe.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comments or questions before we open it up to the public?
Mr. Chairman, I completely agree with my colleague Terry Van Zoro's comments. However, having done it as a, several dozens of these public meetings, even whether they're virtual or in person, the participation always becomes the, those handful of people who are extremely vocal. What we want to make sure in Monroe is we're not only just inclusive, but we're bringing the voices of other people too. I completely agree with you, Terry, what you said, but the problem is they don't come to you. You have to go to them. That's what we learned, especially in some of the communities. And I think as long as we follow that, we're golden. Thank you.
I'm trying. I appreciate it. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you. If no other comments, we will open it up to the public.
Mr. Chairman, Jerome Convery.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know that we normally swear people in only for applications as testimony, whereas in a public portion, we don't normally swear people in.
Okay.
And we leave it up to them to indicate their name and their address. Also, our rules and regulations say that the public portion should be limited to three minutes per person.
Okay, thank you.
We should abide by the rules.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there any member of the public which would like to be heard? Christine Patterson. And unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern about the senior communities is as a resident of Concordia, is that getting outreach to the senior communities in a non-electronic format is going to be very challenging, given the timeline to get the public input. The clubhouses are not open, so getting into the clubhouses is not an option. And the newspapers have very long lead times on them. I don't think, for instance, that even if you sent something in right now for the Concordia newspaper, that it would make the June issue. So, you know, there are some, some real challenges there in terms of the timeline and being able to reach out other than electronically. You know, it may be that it'll just have to be with some kind of, you know, leaflets, printed surveys, you know, big piles of them that can be made available to the residents of the, of the communities for them to pick up. But it's going to be very difficult, I think, given the timeline to, to get to them. Just, you know, for your information.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments from the public? Michael Leskey. You're going to have to unmute yourself.
Got it. Hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Just two comments I'd like to make. You know, one, because of the big overcrowding problem we have in our schools here, I know there's a lot of people very sensitive to the affordable housing requirements we have here in New Jersey. And I guess it was about a year ago, just before COVID hit, I know our business administrator, Alan Weinberg, was planning on a, a public information campaign, yeah, probably in person at the time, yeah, to talk in depth about, about affordable housing. And I know, not that I'm a good friend of Alan, yeah, but I've, I've watched him enough on the Zoom meetings to know he's a very good, trustworthy, believable person. And I was wondering whether or not he himself, or maybe somebody from H2M, might conduct a, a special seminar or a special conference, I guess, on affordable housing, to make sure people understand, yeah, what the requirements are. Yeah, and it's not as simple as just putting a sign up as, as far as, hey, no more building in Monroe, because people have got to understand that. Yeah, because if they don't understand it, yeah, we may not get anywhere with regard to planning for the future. Yeah, that was my one comment. One question I'd like to ask, just wondering, is it particular to New Jersey, but I'm wondering, why doesn't the master plan include consideration of educational facilities? Yeah, I appreciate an answer at least to that, that question. Thank you very much. And actually look very, very much looking forward to providing input along the way.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Mr. Convery could explain. I don't know if Mr. Leskey, when he mentions educational things in terms of the master plan, if he's talking about things like impact fees or things of that nature. Obviously, we're not allowed to impose those type of things. I don't know if that's answering the question or not, but.
Terry, I'm thinking about schools and school additions.
Right.
If I can, if I can, Mr. Chairman, that was an issue that was discussed thoroughly. And as you know, the actual planning for school facilities, it's not something that is done at the township level. It's done at the Board of Education and that's the key reason why the Board of Education is represented with the president and a member of the PTA on the stakeholder group so that we can get a significant amount of input and views from the Board of Education and constituents that they represent.
Understood, Joe, but there's no true element to, to be looked at, I guess, as a, a major topic when it comes to education, I take it.
That's a part of it.
I'm sure that it will be incorporated as part of, again, we're really approaching this from a, an enthusiastic and positive viewpoint, Michael. And, and what we're going to do is as this input comes in from the public and the various stakeholders, we'll be able to distill all that and then we'll be able to obviously craft a plan that I think at least recognizes some of the issues that, that are going on within the township as it relates to education.
Right.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Nope, it doesn't appear. So we'll go on to the next item on the agenda and that is any correspondence.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, in thinking through as we're discussing this, I think Ryan and his team should be aware that in every one of our adult communities, there is an elected president, chairman, whatever, of each homeowners association. So there's one in Rosmore, there's one in Clearbrook, Concordia and so forth. It would be worth your while to, upon getting their names, actually reach out to them directly to help coordinate the whole effort to get into the adult communities and get their input.
Definitely.
Thank you. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have my hand up.
Sure. Rosalyn?
I'm the chairperson of the Mayor's Senior Community Advisory Committee.
Oh, perfect.
And we have, we have representatives from every adult community on the committee. Eileen Bienis, the mayor's executive assistant, has a list of all the members and that would be a very good way to reach out to, to the communities.
I agree.
Communities.
Right.
And we'd be very happy to have you come and talk to us.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin, if I may, very briefly.
Sure.
I know that Ms. Patterson had made an excellent point before about newspaper circulation and timing of the survey, and I think that was a great point. In addition to all of the other one-on-one contacts and neighborhood group contacts that I think are essential, I just want everyone to know that we are having some discussion with the administration about expediting our next issue of Monroe News to the community, to the entire township, and working on the most efficient way of getting the survey information out through that paper, you know, venue as well. So I don't have all the details on that. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that those conversations are, are happening right now and that we'll, we'll update you as soon as we can on that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan, thank you for you and your team and the board looks forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, Chair. Appreciate you.
And then moving on to the next item agenda, which is correspondence. Is there any correspondence this, this month? Hearing none, we will move on to adjourning the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.